Ladies and gentlemen, if you follow the agenda, you'll know that we had a special session of the Lompoc City Council that started 2:00 this afternoon and finished just a short time ago. There were two parts of that session. One was a workshop to discuss our policies. Nothing was finalized in that. We drafted some policies with the words to be prepared for us. The one that was of most interest to the community regarded prayer. We have appointed a committee to meet with some of the ministers in town to get some additional information and put together a policy that will come back and we will debate it at a regular meeting before we vote on it. The second part of our special session this afternoon was a closed session merely to review with our attorney and staff the status of a particular lawsuit that has been recently filed that we had some questions on. There were no actions taken there, no vote to report, nothing that we can report. It was just information gathering at that meeting. That was the closed session for a special meeting of the Lompoc City Council. I'll call this meeting, I'll call that meeting to an adjournment right now. The special session is come to a close now and we'll now start our regular council meeting for this evening. Thank you.
One minute, one minute. Come in. Good evening. The January 19, 2010 Regular City Council and Redevelopment Agency meetings are called to order. I would like to thank all the members of the public for being here in this wet chilly night. I'd like to thank the viewers and also all the residents that are looking at the meeting live through our website. We do have a live link where you can sit and watch our meetings. I also would like to thank this council for starting to work today at 2:00. Had an afternoon session followed by a closed session and here we are at the 7:00 meeting. I was made aware that Ms. Anita Freedom was called out of town and, oh, I'm sorry, we need to call to order, we need to call, make a roll call, sorry.
Council, council agency member Lingal.
Here.
Rouge.
Here.
Durham.
Present.
Mayor Protem Martner.
Present.
Mayor Chair Siminski.
Present.
I will ask Mr. Akronowitz to come to the podium and so we can receive the invocation. I would also ask the public to stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, sir, please. We'll start our agenda tonight with the presentations. We have three presentations. The first one was actually given elsewhere and I will read it briefly. It is a proclamation for the Carousel of Cultures Day, January 18, 2010, was given to Ms. Monague of Club Arturos on January 6, 2010, and was read at the Carousel of Cultures event on January 18, 2010, at Lompoc High School. The two other presentations are going to be here tonight. The first presentation is a Special Olympics, a presentation by the chief, Tim Dabney.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Protem, Mayor, city council members. Every year, for the past eight years, the city of Lompoc has been graced with an event which has become a signature event for our community and for our police department. The Eighth Annual Lompoc Police Department Special Olympics Car Show was held on September 5, 2009, and this charity has become one of the single largest fundraisers for the Special Olympics organization in the state of California. Now, this event doesn't happen on its own. We have scores of people that help us out and we want to recognize some of them this evening. But before I do that, I would like to ask Sergeant, retired Sergeant Harry Height, to please join me and help me make these presentations up here. We all know that this event brings hundreds of car enthusiasts to our city and it would not be possible without the efforts of Harry Height and the other members of the Lompoc Police Department. Harry's commitment, community involvement, his commitment to Lompoc and his genuine love for our city are exemplary. So, I want to say thank you to Harry for all that he does and we're going to recognize some other folk tonight that helped us out with our endeavor. So, thanks, Harry. To begin with, I'd like to call up members of the Kiwanis Club and Mayor, if you'd like to come down here, you can as well. But with us this evening is the president, Monica Bennett, Bruce Nix, if you could come forward, Monica and Bruce, Dan Botery, Bob Barbosa, Mike Siminski, of course, you're here, and the camera shy person is Andra Campbell. Are you coming? Okay, good. Oh, she's the photographer. The Kiwanis Club of Lompoc stepped up this year to provide a tri-tip barbecue on the day of the car show. This team, right here, of dedicated community volunteers, barbecued and served hundreds of tri-tip meals to car show participants.
Our second presentation tonight is the Solar Energy Rebate presentation by the Southern California Gas Company. I will ask Mr. Bean to step up and the members of the Southern California Gas Company to come up to the podium, please.
This is a presentation for our rebate money on our solar energy project. I'll let the Chevron members describe the project. Dan?
Hi, my name's Conrad Newberry and I'm the Regional Operations Director for Chevron Energy Solutions. Mayor, city council, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As you know, you entered into an energy services and solar project with us recently and we're happy to say we're making great progress and the city is going to benefit greatly from the energy efficiency work that you've done and the solar work that you've done. To give you a couple highlights about what's going on, the solar energy efficiency project in Lompoc will save the city of Lompoc about $100,000 a year in savings by generating your own power. You have, will have about 800 solar panels installed and it'll be the largest solar project in the city of Lompoc. There are also energy efficiency upgrades, we've done some lighting upgrades, we've done some irrigation efficiency, and we're doing some HVAC improvements. In fact, we'll be wrapping up shortly later this year. And finally, we're pleased to say that the solar project is eligible and will be a recipient of an energy grant program that Southern California Gas Company is managing and we're here to present you the check tonight for that. And so, I'll turn it over to Tim Mahoney with the gas company.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of council and staff and everyone in the audience, Tim Mahoney, SoCal Gas Company. We're the administrators of the project here and bringing you the check here. I have to say that the number on this check, $176,000, is actually incorrect. It's my fault. It's $177,000. And my friend Frank Mateo, who's account executive for the city of Lompoc, has the actual checks here to be presented today and that there's four of those. So, I want to say thanks to the leadership that's been portrayed in the city of Lompoc over the years for energy efficiency, self-generation. Those things are important to do and they just don't happen overnight. The process is not complicated, but it does take people to do that. And so, the Chevrons and the gas companies, we look for an energy champion, if you will, within cities and counties and a person who is going to handle and kind of shepherd, if you will, the application and the paperwork and the receipts and the engineering designs, all those things which you do every day because you're a city and you have facilities. So, Larry Bean was that champion. So, thank you, my friend, for sticking with this project. That was great. So, really, that's all we have tonight, a large check. We'd like to present that, take a few photos, and we'll be on our way. If you have questions, ask me and Chevron is here. So, if not, can we just do a photo op real quick?
Right there behind you.
Mayor Protem, of course, of course.
Would you like to come in there?
Sure, why don't we all gather up?
Thank you for the money, $177,000. We'll take it, right?
Squeeze in tight so we can all get in there. It's a big check.
Come on, Joanne.
Moving on to the agenda, the next item is City Administrator Status Report. This is for information only. We get the reports in our agenda package, packages. Every council meeting, the council members receive an agenda package and there are status reports in there. This time, we received a fire department status update for the month of December. We also received some business tax, new business tax licenses for the last three months. The next item is Staff Request and Announcements. Ms. Barcelona?
Mayor Protem Martner and city council staff has a few items tonight. Deputy City Clerk Stacy Alvarez is sitting in for City Clerk Donna Taronas. And in anticipation of the continued forecast for rain this week, filled sandbags are available at the corporate yard for citizens to pick up and that is 1300 West Laurel Avenue. And Battalion Fire Chief Robert Kovak gave me some information regarding the current storm. Says the series of storms hitting our area are expected to taper off on Saturday. An cumulative total of four to eight inches of rain is possible in the Lompoc Valley. The city's emergency services are ready for activation if needed and fire department staff will monitor any developing flow in the San Inez River and capacity of Bradbury Dam at Lake Ochuma. And then, in response to council's expressed goal to have citywide customer service training, Human Resources will be conducting a training effort beginning January 26 and the customer service training classes will continue through February and conclude in early March. Staff extends an invitation to the city council to attend training and while council is tentatively scheduled for classes on January 27 at either times of 10:00 a.m. or 1:30 p.m., council is invited to attend any of the scheduled classes and staff will provide council scheduled classes, class dates for your convenience. And lastly, it is with much regret that I announce the resignation of Management Services Director Renee Visse effective January 29. Mr. Visse has accepted a position with Santa Maria as the Director of Administrative Services and he will begin his new appointment effective February 1. Renee has served the city over the past 12 years in the Finance Department and was promoted to Director of Finance in January of 2009. During his tenure with the city of Lompoc, Renee consistently demonstrated a high level of commitment and excellence, providing council and staff sound financial and budget guidance through an unprecedented economic downturn while maintaining a great sense of humor through it all. So, Renee, would you please come to the podium? Renee, on behalf of council and myself, we commend you for your commitment and service to the city of Lompoc and while you will be greatly missed, we congratulate you on your new appointment and wish you all the best. And we extend a certificate of appreciation from the city of Lompoc presented to Renee Visse, Director of Management Services, for your years of service, the city of Lompoc, April 1, 1998, April Fool's Day, to January 29, 2010, and wishing you much future success.
Thank you, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and the public. It's been an honor and a privilege to have worked here for the past 10 years or 12 years almost. And I just want to say that you do have a wonderful staff working for the city. They work very hard and they do a terrific job and they're willing to give what it takes to get the job done. And I'm very fortunate to have worked with such a commendable staff over the past 12 years. And anyway, thank you very much for this plaque. Thank you.
Next item is Council Redevelopment Request and Announcements. We have two requests and the first one is Resolution Number 5602, 2010, Local Taxpayer Public Safety and Transportation Protection Act for 2010. This request was made by Mayor Siminski. While the City Administrator Barcelona prepared the staff report, Mayor Siminski would like to comment on the report for council consideration. Mike, would you like to discuss?
Thank you. Voters may remember that about eight years ago, there was a measure on the ballot, Proposition 1A, which stated that the governor and the legislature in California was prohibited from taking money that's earmarked for cities, sales tax, vehicle license fees, property tax. At the time that that measure was put on the ballot, mayors, city council members, other individuals that are interested in city government all over the state went out and collected the more than 100, more than a million signatures necessary to put the measure on the ballot. We were trying to be kind at that time to the governor. We put in there that the act would be suspended in a case of fiscal emergency. Well, as soon as the thing was voted on by the public, the governor and the legislature declared a fiscal emergency, which has lasted ever since, and they continue to try to take money. Every time we turn around, it's either library money or it's street roads fund money, it's money that is available for redevelopment. The state feels that even though they dug the hole, they should be able to come to us and take our money away to fill that hole. The League of California Cities has prepared another initiative to go on the ballot. It will, this time, not have the opt-out measure for the governor in the state. It requires city money collected under current formulas to be distributed to the cities and to the local governments. Cities are not allowed, and I'm not allowed, we're not allowed, to use municipal resources to try to get the signatures or to promote this thing. But I do have petitions and if anyone wants to help me, you can call me on my cellphone, which is my own phone, I pay for it myself, and I will meet you someplace other than City Hall and get your petitions that you may want to help me circulate. It will again take over a million and a quarter signatures to qualify this for the ballot. We hope to have it on in November. The city is authorized to do one thing and that is to educate and we've prepared tonight a resolution which states how the city will be impacted if the governor and the legislature take the money that they want to take and what this act will do to help preserve the funding for the cities. And I recommend that the city council adopt the resolution endorsing this act and use whatever means is necessary to disseminate it as a, just an information item of what's out there and what's happening and hopefully what will be on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Does the council have any questions for the mayor or Ms. Barcelona? No questions?
I'll second the motion.
We need public comment, I'm sorry. We have, we're not ready to make a motion. So, it's, at this point in time, it's only questions to the mayor or Ms. Barcelona. If there are no questions, the council will now open for public comment. Each speaker has five minutes. Please fill out the card that is out in the lobby, state your name, and keep track of the lights. When the lights turn yellow, you still have one minute left. We're open for public comment.
I'm assuming this is an issue for oral communications at a point where we can speak on an agenda, something that's not on the agenda?
No, no, that's coming later. This is specifically to this item that we're discussing right now, the presentation and the resolution. I'll let you know when the oral comments come in. Sorry. The public comment right now is open for the presentation that Mayor, well, for the report that Ms. Barcelona made and Mayor Siminski spoke of. Seeing no one rise, we close for public comment and now we come back to the council.
Madam Mayor Protem, I would like to move that the council adopt Resolution 5602, Part 10.
I second it. Any discussion or are we ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Move on into the next council request, number two, request for proposal to provide fire protection services for the city of Lompoc. This request was made by council member Lingal. I'll ask Chief Linial White to give us a report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience and those watching on television this evening. For the record, my name is Linial White and I am the fire chief with the city of Lompoc. At your last regular meeting, by a majority, council-directed staff to prepare a request for proposal to provide fire protection services for the city of Lompoc by Santa Barbara County Dependent Fire Protection District. This concept is not new to Santa Barbara County, nor is it new to the Lompoc Fire Department. Historically, the request for proposal concept or the consolidation of services first appeared with the city of Lompoc back in the late 90s. 1998, 99, Santa Barbara County Grand Jury Report looked at the feasibility of consolidating fire protection services and dispatch services, both for incorporated and unincorporated parts of the county. Immediately following that report, Lompoc City Council directed staff to prepare an RFP back in the early 2000. That RFP was developed by Santa Barbara County Fire and it was submitted to the city of Lompoc. Our records don't show what the reasons were, but for whatever reason at that time, it was not feasible to move forward with an RFP. This issue arose again in 2006 after the council commissioned an independent study by a third party of fire protection services in Lompoc. That study was done by Robert Olson and Associates. It was a master planning study and it identified staffing deficiencies within the department. As a result of that report, an assessment of the funding source for additional staffing in the fire department was not successful and so council directed, or assigned an ad hoc commission which was to look into how to fund public safety. The result of that was that there was no money to provide additional staffing and alternative funding sources needed to be developed. Measure T 2008 was presented to the voters, which was a public safety tax. It passed the majority vote, but it did not pass the two-thirds test required for a special tax. As a result of that defeat, council once again looked at alternatives to providing the fire protection services to our community. A request for proposal was directed by council to staff in June 3 of 2008. Staff aggressively pursued the RFP with Santa Barbara County Fire and it was progressing quite well until we were notified by the county of the rather sudden retirement of their then-sitting fire chief. A new chief has now been seated and council has directed staff to once again look at the feasibility of a request for proposal. That is included in your packet this evening and staff is asking council to receive this report and direct staff to submit the request for proposal to provide fire protection services to Santa Barbara County Dependent Fire Protection District for their review and consideration. If council directs us to do that, we will begin working with their staff to come up with that proposal and we will bring it back to you at its earliest possible date. This concludes my report and I would be happy to answer any questions and take direction from you at this time.
Thank you, Chief White. Does the council have any questions for the chief? None at this time. I will open it for public comment. Again, the public is asked to fill a card and state their names. You have five minutes to speak on this item.
I'd like to speak in support of Chief White's presentation tonight. We've been working closely with our fire chief for, I don't know, 25 years now, trying to get something going. So, we've really noticed a, everything really started to come to light in roughly 2006 when a lot of the studies were done and really brought to light the fact of our staffing, equipment and budgetary shortfalls. So, we would like to ask a yes vote for support with looking at the county. Just a reminder, this is just to look at the budget. You're not signing our lives away yet. We're just looking at the possibility that the county can provide an equal or better service to the city for wherever they can. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dodds. Any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Did he go in and speak a speaker card? Okay, I see. Is that gentleman going to speak on the item? Does anybody, yes? Okay, thank you.
Richard Patei, reside at 3500 Halama Road. I support Chief Linial White's proposal.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, council, Dwayne Hohmdel, city of Lompoc. I live in the city of Lompoc, I'll put that way. I don't disagree with what Linial White had to say, or Chief White had to say, but the one thing is that we have done studies in the past, and not one of those studies have come back and said it was cheaper to go with the county. As a Lompokian, as it's put it that way, the one concern I have is that if you go with the county Fire Department, which is, they do an excellent job in our Fire Department, they'll be a county Fire Department. They will not be the city of Lompoc Fire Department. The firemen will not stay in Lompoc. They will be transferred all over this county to different places. There's nobody can keep them there. So I think that's one thing the council should take a heat on when the information comes back, but I believe we've had three reports over the past, and each one showed it was more costly to go with the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hohmdel. Seeing no one rise, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council. Are we ready to entertain a motion? Yes?
I was going to make a comment.
Please comment.
Like, like you said, it's been going on a long time. This isn't, you know, decision-making time tonight, but I do have a comment on Mr. Hohmdel. It's my understanding, and Chief Linial White, if you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the firefighters that we have here locally, provided they don't promote, will be allowed to stay here within the city. Is that correct?
Councilmember Durham, for the record, Linial White, Fire Chief, city of Lompoc. The devil is in the detail, and what we are doing tonight is asking for direction to move forward with a request for proposal. I would not venture to comment on what the details would be. We would certainly, our, our, our position is not to be a proponent or opponent of this proposal, but to look at how we can best provide services to the citizens of Lompoc, and also to protect our personnel and make sure that they are taken care of as well. So we would be involved in lengthy discussion of how a transition would take place, what the personnel, their expectation of our personnel, how they would be integrated, where they would stay, would they be transferred out, et cetera. So those are all possibilities, but again, they're in the details, and we, we would look out for the citizens' and our employees' best interest.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reje, and then Councilmember Lengel.
Excuse me, I agree with Chief White. We've talked about this for years, as long as I can remember, and people say, oh, it's too expensive, oh, it's this, oh, it's that, and I think it's time we need to find out at this point in time, the cost and how many services can be delivered that will protect our, our citizens here. So I think it's time to look at this and maybe get this issue settled once and for all, one way or the other.
Councilmember Lengel.
I agree with Councilwoman Reje. Even though Mr. Hohmdel stated that this is possibly the third proposal over the number of years, as was presented by Chief White earlier, the proposal in the early 2000s, no one really knows why it was rejected. We don't have the details on that. The one that was started in 2006, 2008, was never even completed. So this council, the majority of this council, really has no idea whether it's a feasible way to go or not. What we're looking for is maximizing the fire protection for the city of Lompoc, and possibly, I mean, if it's going to save us a little money, that'd be great, but we just want to make sure that we can maximize the fire protection for the city of Lompoc and continue to provide those services. That's all we're looking for right now.
Mayor Zeminski.
Thank you, Ms. Marner. I, I will support sending this thing forward, but I do so with, with hesitation, and I want to remind the council what we are committing ourselves to tonight. It's not just a matter of comparing the, a proposal received from the county with the cost of the fire budget here. It's looking deeply at what city of Lompoc will, what the overall cost to the city will be. Right now, we have a dispatch that handles police and fire, with about half the cost shared by the police and half by the fire. If we, if the Fire Department wants to use their own 911 system and their own dispatch system, we will still have to maintain the dispatch for police, which is going to be an increased cost to the city. Right now, we have a lot of overhead, which is supporting the Fire Department. We have one attorney here. A part of his fee is paid for by each department in the city. If the Fire Department is not going to pay his share, pay their share of his fee, we're not going to cut one-eighth of Joe Panoni out and tell him to, we only want seven-eighths of a body here. We're going to have to make up in the other departments the loss. We have that with payroll, we have that with administration, we have that with finance, we have that with the HR system, and the evaluation.
Next agenda item, appointments. We have three appointments. The first one is for the Library Board of Trustees. We have two terms ending in 2013, and we also have two applicants. Do we have any of the applicants in the audience? No. Normally, each council member nominates somebody, but since we have two applicants and two vacancies, is, would anybody like to make a motion to nominate both applicants?
Okay, I'll nominate both applicants for the positions.
Next appointment, Senior Commission, one term ending on 2014. We do have one applicant. Is the applicant present? Is there a motion to appoint the applicant to the term?
So moved.
And finally, we have the Youth Commission. We have one adult term ending on 2010, and then we have three youth terms ending on 2012 as well. We have one adult applicant, and we have three youth applicants. So we are pretty much pair. Is there a motion to nominate the adult and the three?
So, I so moved.
Gosh, you're slow. I second it.
Push the button again, please. I congratulate all the applicants. Thank you for serving the community. I congratulate all the applicants. Thank you for serving the community. Next item is public hearing. We are talking about agenda item number seven, Annual and Five-Year SB 1693 Compliance Report for AB 1600 Development Impact Fees. Management Services Director Renee Visser will give us the report.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, staff, and the public. Staff, a brief presentation, only about six slides. We're talking about the AB 1600 Impact or Mitigation Fee Act that was passed back in 1987, but it became effective in January of 1989. And it's a charge for impacts on capital facilities due to development, both residential and commercial. And the first impact fee study for the city was done in 1989 by Ernst &amp; Young, which was one of the Big Eight CPA firms. And the second was back in November of '03, which is really fiscal year '04, by a company called Maximus. And in that study, the, the impact fees were actually increased each year by the increase in the Engineering News Record, or ENR Cost Index, the Construction Cost Index, every April of each year. Then in 1997, SB 1693, Senate Bill 1693, was passed, which required a five-year compliance report to be prepared and accepted by the council if all the fees that were collected were not spent. In that, you have to identify the purpose of the fee, demonstrate a reasonable relationship of the fee and the actual project, and the nexus with that project and development. And you have to identify all sources and amounts of funding besides just the impact fees, if that's what's more required. And you have to identify the approximate dates of the projects, which is kind of a difficult thing to do at times. So the last five-year compliance report was done in 2001 by John Walk at that time. And so right now, we've had impact fees spent on both traffic signals and park improvements. And impact fees can also be used to pay debt service on projects, okay? When the projects have to be, have to be built by other sources of funds, like, like bonds, or some of that, some of that, something of that nature, well, then when the impact fees come in, you can use it to make the debt service, or a portion of the debt service on that obligation. Some of the issues are that development doesn't occur as planned, which is always a major issue, because you're really going out into the future 10, 20, 30 years. So the money dribbles in, okay? So many, many times, funding has to come from different sources. Remember, this, the money that comes from this impact fees can only be used for capital projects. The recommendation tonight is that you receive the Annual and Five-Year Compliance Report that's in your handouts, adopt the findings in the report, and then direct the city clerk to retain the report and the official records of the city. And that concludes my brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Visser. Do we have any questions? Council have any questions? Not of the, oh, sorry. Councilmember Reje.
I, I noticed in the report that all these fees are put into interest-bearing accounts.
That's correct.
Is it, it's not the same one? Are they separate interest-bearing accounts for each?
No, it's, it is the same interest-bearing account.
Okay.
The, the money's commingled, but accounted for separately in our books.
Oh, okay. Boy, that interest really adds up.
Yes, it does over time.
Yeah, sure does.
Any other questions? Well, we will now open for public hearing, the public hearing to take public testimony. Any member of the public that would like to give us a testimony? Seeing no one, we will close the public testimony and return the matter to the council for further consideration and motion. Councilmember Lengel.
I move that we accept staff recommendations.
Do we have a second? It passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, agenda item number eight, Council Consideration of Ordinance 156110, Amending the City's Water Efficient Landscape and Irrigation Standards. I will ask Mr. Stasi to come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, staff, members of the public. The staff report will be done by our senior administrative analyst, who worked on this project with state officials and other city departments. So Susan Segovia will be presenting the report. She has copies for the council, and I'll have copies of this presentation that'll be out there for the public.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, and ladies and gentlemen, before you, you have consideration of ordinance number 156110, amending the city's water landscape and irrigation The Water Landscaping Act was actually passed in 2006, and cities and counties were required to either adopt by January 1, 2010, the state model landscape ordinance, or a landscape ordinance, which is considered as effective in conserving water as the state model ordinance. The Water Conservation and Landscaping Act was adopted in 2006, and it is actually an update of a '92 model ordinance. The model ordinance did require Department of Water Resources to have the model ordinance prepared by, actually, January 1, 2009. However, it was not available and did not become effective until September 10, 2009, and an informational webcast was not presented until November 3, 2009. Due to the lateness of the city's approval, of the state's approval, rather, of the model ordinance, city staff was unable to provide a recommendation to council earlier. The model ordinance allows either for the adoption of the model ordinance or a local ordinance, which is considered as effective as the model ordinance. Utility staff work together diligently with the proposed changes with the Community Development Department and Parks and Recreation Departments. Both departments contributed to the development of the ordinance and are supportive of the City originally, city staff originally and council adopted landscape standards on December 10, 1992. Ordinance number 156110 is as effective in conserving water as the state model ordinance. Ordinance number 156110 applies to development in new landscaping and commercial and industrial development and commonly-owned residential areas. The next several slides discuss proposed changes to the landscape standards. I'm going to highlight some of the significant ones. Section 1552030, definition, new landscape, again, is landscape and irrigation for newly-constructed development or in existing development where more than 75% of the planting or irrigation on-site is replaced. Also in section 15.52040, new landscape applies to landscape with irrigated landscape areas equal to or greater than 2,500 square feet in commercial and industrial development or commonly-maintained residential areas. The landscape ordinance does include a water budget, which is mandated, and that's in section 15.52050. And there is a new section in 15.52060, which requires separate landscape water meters for all new landscape, which has more than 5,000 square feet of irrigated landscape. In conclusion, I'd like to summarize. With the introduction and adoption of ordinance 156110, city will have met the requirements of Assembly Bill 1881, which discusses the state's model ordinance. Ordinance number 156110 finds that the proposed amendments to the water, landscape, and irrigation standards in chapter 15.52 of the city code are beneficial and, and, and are as effective as the state's model ordinance in conserving water. Ordinance number 156110 will replace the state's model ordinance for the city if approved by city council. Staff recommends that the city council do the following. Way further reading and introduce ordinance number 156110 superseding chapter 15.52 of the Lompoc City Code, which established the water-efficient landscape and irrigation standards. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Does the council have any questions for Ms. Segovia? No questions? We will open it- We will open it now for public comment. Is there any members of the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing no one, oh, sorry. Sorry.
That's okay. I was moving a little slower than others. Good evening, Ralph Harmon, Lompoc. I read the report on this thing before I came, and then I left it on my desk, so I'm going to use my failing memory to try to remember the points. But one of them was, number one, it's an unfunded mandate from the state, which is nice. This is our tax money at work here, duplicating what we already have in Lompoc. I remember when the original ordinance was, in fact, there wasn't too much discussion because the people of Lompoc were already doing everything that the ordinance wanted. We were already the lowest users, so here we have the state telling us what to do. I think we tell the state what to do, too. But anyway, there's some cost measures in this thing that weren't addressed tonight. One of them, there's a second water meter installation required. If I'm correct, don't we charge extra for each additional water meter? So there would be some additional cost to developments and developments for this. Also, I didn't see anything about parks, city parks, parks that were within developments, would those be covered under that joint area clause? I'm not sure that's specifically stated, and they're either the state or ours. So, except those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. I will ask the staff to address those issues at a later date. Thank you. Or would you like to? You can do it right now, if you like, if you have the answers. I usually say at a later date if you didn't have all the answers, but you're welcome to answer right now.
I'd like to address the first question concerning the second water meter. I'm assuming that you're talking about the water meter that would be required for landscapes with 5,000 square feet. That actually does occur now for many landscapes, because in your larger developments, it's to their advantage to have a separate meter for irrigation. So that's actually beneficial, and if it's not being done in the others, it would be required. Now, your other question concerning parks, there are provisions in there which do allow parks, of course, to have the landscape that they need for recreational opportunities. So I'm not sure that that addresses your question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comments? We close the public comment and turn it back into the council. What are the wishes of the council?
Let me ask one question, I believe, in response to Mr. Harmon's question, that in the city, right now, the sewage fee is based on the amount of water you draw. So if you put in a second meter for landscaping, that water is not going into the sewage and sewage plant. We know that, so they would not be charged the high sewage fee for the amount of water going through. So that could be one of the advantages and reasons for putting in a second meter. I'd like to move for the staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Let's vote. It passes unanimously. We move on into the next new business item, Agenda Item Number Nine, Approval of Assignment from Yolo County Transit District for a 45-foot commuter coach, and authorization to sign a contract to purchase one 45-foot commuter coach from Motor Coach Industries, MCI, for I'll ask Richard Farben.
Actually, Richard was not able to make it tonight, so I'm going to be pitch-hitting for him, if you don't mind.
That's perfectly fine. Please state your name and your position for the record.
Good evening, honorable mayor, council members, members of the public. My name is Kevin McKeon, Assistant Public Works Director. Again, I'll be presenting the report for Richard Fernbaugh, our transit administrator. Tonight, we'll ask you to consider two items. The first is the assignment of the right to purchase one coach under the terms and conditions of the Yolo County Transportation District, Bid Number 200903, dated June 10, 2009. And then also to a purchase contract with Motor Coach Industries for a new 45-foot, 55-passenger coach to be used on the Clean Air Express fleet. Before I get into the details of the purchase, a little background on the Clean Air Express. Clean Air Express Transit Service was created by the Air Pollution Control District, APCD, in 1990 as an air quality improvement and technology demonstration program. In 2001, the APCD assigned the existing contract to Traffic Solutions Division of SB CAG, so that Traffic Solutions could expand and manage the services as a formal commute alternative for North County residents. Currently, six routes serve Lompoc, and five routes serve Santa Maria, all operating southbound in the morning, northbound in the afternoon, on weekdays only. In 2008, the Clean Air Express carried a little over 223,000 passengers, and had a fare box ratio of 80%. And I want to note that 60% of the riders for Clean Air Express come from Lompoc, so we have a very large interest in this service. The funding for this, this purchase will be from a FTA, Federal Transit Administration, ERA stimulus funds. Can only be used for Clean Air Express, and cannot, for instance, be used on the COLT One mic question, why is the city of Lompoc buying a Clean Air Express bus? There's a little history behind that. The beginning of the start to purchase the bus happened about a year ago, when the service was operated by SB CAG. They have been transitioning out of operating Clean Air Express, and on June 2, the city council, Lompoc City Council, approved an agreement with SB CAG to temporarily assign responsibility for management to the city through June 30 of this year. SB CAG is currently evaluating a long-range operational plan for Clean Air Express, and I anticipate that this SB CAG staff will bring the plan to the board for approval in March. So that's why I'm here today talking about Clean Air Express purchase, is we are the temporary managers of the service, and therefore get to implement this planned replacement. On that note, the maintenance costs for these buses, the budget for Clean Air Express is independent from COLT. We keep the money separate. Although the city of Lompoc owns several existing buses for Clean Air Express, and will own title to the new bus, all long-term costs, including all maintenance costs, are paid for by SB CAG, primarily through Measure D at this moment, and then will be through Measure A in the future. Although we currently administer Clean Air Express, and we are assuming this purchase will replace what we call Clean Air Express 13, it's one of the older coaches in the fleet, the final determination on whether this should be a replacement or expansion bus will rest with the future manager of Clean Air Express. I want to make one note to the agreement with MCI, and I was told you would have this in your packets, but if you don't, I have extra copies here. We want to make an addendum to the agreement to clarify the engine purchase with regard to CARB compliance, and we're calling that Addendum One to the agreement, and we've had our city attorney review this already, and I'll pass these down in case those aren't in your packets. So we'd like that to be a part of your recommendation, if you so choose to go forward. So in conclusion, I would recommend that the city council authorize the city administrator to sign a letter of assignment with Yolo County Transit District for a 45-foot commuter coach, and also authorize the city administrator to sign a contract, including Addendum Number One, with Motor Coach Industries to purchase one 45-foot diesel commuter coach, and authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order. And I'm available for any questions you have.
Councilmember Rozier.
Yeah, Mr. McKeon, so we're buying a bus for Clean Air Express, and then in June, SB CAG may decide to go with somebody else to run the Clean Air Express. So what happens to that bus?
That's correct. This bus will be purchased for the Clean Air Express fleet, and will be used by whoever is managing at that time. The city of Lompoc will not be utilizing this bus for any other purposes. So just like the other four buses that are owned by the city of Lompoc that were purchased in 1997, they'll be used for the purposes of Clean Air Express. It's really a, we're eligible to receive FTA dollars, and so it's a matter of convenience that the city is participating kind of as a team player to provide this service for the North County, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor Samenski and Councilmember Lingel after.
Kevin, you, I didn't see, maybe it is in here, a comment that we think the price is fair and reasonable. We didn't go out for bid, we're piggybacking on a contract or invitation for bid that the Yolo County sent out. And I'll presume that it's a very good price, because they ordered, what, 126 buses or something like that? And if we piggyback and take one, I've got to assume it's a better price than if we went out on our own. But sometimes I get in trouble for assuming, so I wanted to verify that with you.
Yes, thank you for asking that. I neglected to mention the purchase price, and I should do that. We're, including tax and delivery and everything, we're looking at $533,205 for the bus. And yes, we believe this is a very reasonable price for the bus. It was, as you mentioned, this is one bus purchase that we're getting for the price of when you buy 150 buses. So if the city of Lompoc went out and procured one bus, I'm sure we would not get the price that is included here.
Thank you. Thank you. I have, well, two comments, actually. The first one is just piggybacking off of Councilmember Rozier and Mayor Samenski's. The bus we are buying, the city of Lompoc is buying, may go to another agency, but for the public out there, just for clarification, that money is not coming from the city of Lompoc. It is money coming from the agency. So we are not taking any money out of our general fund or any of our funds at all. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Then another comment, and this, Mr. McKeon, I'm not asking you to actually, you could comment on it if you want, but maybe for future staff reports, not only for your agency, but cities in general. I always see this comment in here, not replace, in this case, it's not replacing older buses at this time will result in higher operating and maintenance costs. Or maybe a tree trim or something like that will result in higher operating costs. In future reports, I'd like to see what the current operating costs are, and what the escalation has been over the past couple of years, so maybe we can just verify that it's your costs are going up. So maybe this is more of a comment for our city administrator.
If you didn't replace the bus, what would be the impact?
Exactly right. So just some justification, you have written down here, and I believe you've done your homework. I'd just like our report to show the statistics that you came up with.
Sure.
No more questions. Thank you, Mr. McKeon. We would open now for public comment. Seeing no one rise, we will close public comment and take the matter back to the council. Is the council ready to make a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I second.
Discussion, I think we need to make the recommendation, including Addendum Number One.
Correct. Sorry. Yes, would you like to repeat your motion, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
And that we include Addendum Number One.
I second that. It passes unanimously. We're finally coming down to the last two or three items on the agenda. Do we have any reading communications, any letters that the council has received in the last day or so? This is a question for the clerk, city clerk. No reading communications. This is the final opportunity for the public to address the council during oral communications. You have two minutes to address the council. Please state your name. Seeing no one rise, we close oral communications. The final opportunity for the council to make comments, meeting reports, and requests. Mayor Samenski and then Councilmember Rozier.
I just want to comment that we're getting out of here at 8:30. I think that's far, far different than the last two meetings that I chaired, where it was 11 o'clock, so.
That's telling you something. I just want to compliment Mayor Protem Martner on her chairing this meeting. I think you did a wonderful job, and see, we are out here by 8:30. It's a miracle.
I think we like it. We will adjourn this meeting. The Lompoc City Council Redevelopment Agency will adjourn to our regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. on February 2, 2010. Good night.